Good morning and welcome all to this meeting of the Logan County Commissioners. It is nine o'clock in the morning, September fifteenth, 2021. We would like to call this meeting but order. And we'll move on to item two. Please rise for the flags, Lou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. Move on to item three. Any citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing now, we'll move on to item four. What? Yes ma'am.
You don't have us on the agenda, so is there a chance I could speak to you? Or do you want me to talk about the logjam later?
Why didn't we get you on the agenda?
I wasn't given an idea.
Well, if... We can't officially...
Exactly.
You can do a briefing on it if you want to. Or I'll say what I say here.
Yeah. Would item nineteen cover that better than... Because she's not a citizen of Logan County, I don't think, are you?
Well, I guess I am a citizen of Logan County, but this pertains to the logjam project.
So it's actually a...
It's an agency.
Right, state agency project, and we don't have it on the agenda, but I think we probably... I don't know, it's...
I mean, your chairman, he's there to speak if you want.
Well, I mean, I think she can speak, I just don't think that we can reply.
Number nineteen will...
Still, we won't be able to get into an iterative discussion on the topic. So, I mean, if you want to brief us on what the status is, that would be fine. Do you state your name and all that stuff for the record?
My name is Gisette Greenwell, District Manager of Logan County Conservation District. Logan County Conservation District in partnership with the State of Oklahoma, the Oklahoma Conservation Commission, and Oklahoma County Commissioners. And our hope is to partner with Logan County Conservation on the logjam project that we're working on. To date, Oklahoma, the State of Oklahoma has put in $250,000 for the project. And Oklahoma County's put in $25,000 for the project. So we're looking to talk to Logan County about putting in a contribution as well. They will be doing a site visit tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m. at one of the owner's properties, Mr. Briscoe, with all the other agencies. And are invited to attend that meeting, that site visit. So if we can get on the agenda and discuss it another time, that would be great.
How quick is this moving, ma'am? Do we need to have a special meeting or what is?
I'll know more tomorrow about how quick it's moving. What they're wanting to do is start on the project by November, mid-November. They're gonna... We are handling it. Conservation District's handling the project. Actually, we're gonna put out RFPs. And it'll all be in compliance with DEQ as far as the debris removal. So it'll move rather quickly as soon as we get some funds. So it would be, you know, good to be able to maybe get a gill on the next agenda or if need be, a special meeting because we're wanting to do it as soon as possible.
All right, I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lou, yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other citizens desiring to be heard? Yes ma'am.
My name is Lorraine Moore, and I live on Charter Oak, so I'd like to discuss number six for a moment. My main issue is the change in speed. We have numerous speeds at 25, signs already up in the area. It is a residential area with lots of kids playing, bicyclists, walkers, joggers, and I'd like to see it stay at 25. And I'm not alone. I mean, I'm alone here today, but I know many in the residential have contacted and requested it stay at 25.
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, item four. Consideration of possible action on minutes of September seventh, 2001. I make the motion to be approved.
I have a second.
Have a motion and a second for further discussion. Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait a minute, I think I'm doing this on...
No, you wanted to give us back here.
Yeah, so she doesn't have to walk all the way down here. Thank you ma'am. All right, item five. Consideration of possible action on revising time and place restrictions on citizens desiring to be heard as set forth on February 12, 2021. And thank you Commissioner Ellis for bringing this up. And yes, February the 12th was the first time we got that on the agenda after we had talked about how to improve this. And after discussion with our county sheriff and a few other elected officials in the county, none of them county commissioners, so I just can't do that. There is a desire to look at modifying this. One of the things that I did as I went back and looked at, a lot of the other counties across the nation and how they handle this and how they do this, because the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act is just for Oklahoma. The act is sort of different in every other state. But it all has the same point or the same end in mind, and that's to allow our citizens to have redress of issues to their local government officials. We are as close to the people as you can get as far as elected officials. So in that light, one of the things that I wanted to offer up is, we had talked about this before, and that is that we could fill out, have the people that wanted to talk to fill out a sheet and check whether they want to talk about an item that's on the agenda or whether they just wanted to address a grievance or address something. And then they would put that subject, they would write that subject on there. And they would have their name and address to show that they were a county person or a resident. And then be allowed to do that. Once again, unless it's an item on the agenda, there would be no iterative discussion. If it's a redress of grievance, it's just a statement similar to what this lady from the board just made. And so with that, I'd like to offer that as maybe a solution to help move this forward. We had talked about, so a couple of years back, we talked about having forms people fill out. And at that time, Logan County was prided itself on just allowing everybody to walk in and have a site without any formal paperwork like that. However, with some of the disruptions that have gone on in Oklahoma County and some other things like that, I think that we should have a little more of a formal process, not a formal requirement, if that makes sense. So with that, I'll give it to the board to discuss.
Yes, my question would be on this card they gotta fill out. Is there a timeline? They gotta have it filled out before the meeting?
So there's several, again, there's several different ways that I saw that different counties did that. Some required it to be filled out before the meeting. Some have the capability of people being able to go to the website and fill it out prior to the meeting. And then some had a paper card that if somebody came in late to the meeting, they could fill it out then and give it to the county clerk. And then she would pass it along to whoever was chair in the meeting to have that included.
You know, I'd be okay with it if they had the capability of just walked in and filling out the card and handed to us.
Right, right.
I just want to be, if someone's got something they want to tell me, I'd like to hear it.
Right, that's the main thing, is a lot of the people that watch, some of the people that watch our meetings is they want to be heard. And we, as the board, we have the right to maintain order and instill order in our meetings. And luckily, the majority of the time, we have the county sheriff here to help in that. By no means do I want any derogatory statements or any, you know, finger pointing. The process is basically, you know, hear the concern and then see if there's a solution, even though we cannot discuss it. We can have that person voice their opinions, voice their concerns after they've said what they want. I agree with the process, that way we have everything in black and white and we can document it. And then after the meeting, then they can meet with their individual district or their commissioners.
Okay. But I do believe that we need some kind of timeline. I mean, we're trying to conduct a business meeting here. You know, we can't just sit here all day.
February, go ahead. On February, we put down three minutes was the max. And I think that would be ample amount of time for somebody to voice their opinion.
Right, and I agree with that. A two, three minute timeline seemed to be what was most often allowed. The other thing was, once the chairman who was running the meeting gets all of the cards, right, that were filled out prior to the meeting or as they're passed in, he looks, they could look at what the subjects are that people want to talk about. And if there's more than two or three that want to voice an opinion about the same subject, then they ask if there's somebody in that group that wants to speak for the group rather than all of them coming in. And that helps speed things along too. And it allows that opinion to be a waste of while helping us move along our meeting. But those are all techniques that we can use to do that.
Well, we try that, and if we don't like it, we can change the meetings.
Yes, sir. We always have the option.
That's the luxury of the board, we have the option of changing our rules, our hand rules.
So I don't know how to make a motion on that, other than we...
Make a suggestion?
Yes.
Can I suggest that we actually table that item? We can put together in writing, get the form drawn, and then have the board approve it all together as a package.
Once again, you've saved our bacon.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it.
I'll put it on for the thirty.
So basically, we're gonna table for the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, because what's thrown up here doesn't cover what was just discussed.
Okay.
So give me a chance to rework that.
Table, for sure. All right. Any other discussion on item five? Hearing now, moving on to item six. Consideration of possible action on resolution to modify traffic control plan for Charter Oak between Bryant and Broadway as follows. Implement a three-way stop at the intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak. Keep current speed limit on the half mile from that intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak going east to Bryant of 35 miles an hour. Decrease the speed limit on the half mile from the intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak going west to Broadway. Will have a maximum speed of 30 miles an hour. School bus stop signs will also be installed at appropriate location. I have it drawing with the signs on it here. Where the three-way stop is at, that's where Oak Cliff Estates, where the road intersects Charter Oak from Oak Cliff Estates. What, that neighborhood has been the subject of a lot of discussion on whether or not to close one of the entrances. Because they have an entrance on Bryant that comes into the south part of that neighborhood, and people use it as a cut through. And we've tried to slow down the big trucks with no truck signs going through there, but that didn't always work. Anyway, that three-way stop is to help slow traffic on Charter Oak at the mid-mile point and to do some traffic control. Looked at this over and the sheriff and again, several of our local law enforcement, Oklahoma Highway Patrolmen and those folks have looked at it, and they all agree that that is a reasonable effort. So the resolution reads, whereas according to statute 4711-801, any person driving a vehicle on a highway shall drive at a speed not greater than or less than is reasonable and proper, having due regard for traffic surface and width of the highway. And whereas due to the population, school bus stops, mail deliveries, and road conditions on Charter Oak between Broadway and Bryant, under the authority of statute 69601, it is desire of the commissioners to approve a speed limit which is reasonable and lawful. And whereas on August 31st, 2021, the Board of Commissioners approved the resolution 21-091, which established a speed limit on Charter Oak beginning at the intersection of Broadway and Charter Oak and proceeding east to the curve at 35 miles an hour. Beginning at the curve of Charter Oak extending to Bryant, the speed limits shall be suggested 25 miles an hour through the curve. And whereas the interest of the public safety, further modification to the traffic control is necessary. And whereas the following modifications are to be implemented. Implement a three-way stop at the intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak. Keep the current speed limit on the half mile from the intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak going east to Bryant of 35 miles an hour. Decrease the speed limit on the half mile from the intersection of North Charter Oak Circle and Charter Oak going west to Broadway. Will have a maximum speed limit of 30 miles an hour. School bus signs will also be installed as appropriate, and we've got those indicated on the map. Be it therefore resolved, the modification on traffic control of Charter Oak Road modified as set forth above.
So Martin, the three-way stop sign has not been there?
No, what, I think we've had a stop sign coming out of Oak Cliff Estates. I think there's a stop sign there that stops traffic before it gets on Charter Oak. But we've never had a break on Charter Oak with dual stop signs causing that. It's one of the things that the sheriff and I had talked about as well. As a matter of policy, we normally don't put in three and four-way stops where residential roads meet a county road. I mean, it's just, because we would have stop signs all over the place if we did that. This is a bit of an exception because of the traffic that flows through this neighborhood from Bryant. Because again, they, people use it as a shortcut because there's no bridge across Bryant. It doesn't go straight through.
Right.
So that's kind of the issue.
And if you're district, I'll support you, anything you want.
I appreciate that. So without... I move that we approve, the resolution as written.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Move on to item seven. Consideration of possible action on 2020 REAP closures documents for paving one mile of Indian Meridian Road. We've got after that a question.
Yes, well, we had some setbacks, but we are finally finished with this project. The people that live out there are pretty happy with it. And we're trying to get everything closed down on this and get some more documents going for the next grant.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, good job. Because once you picked this up, it didn't take long for you to get the REAP put forward and the road fixed. And that's the big thing right there.
It is a completely different road now.
Looking at the picture, it looks like y'all live in a nice villa.
Just for you.
I'll move to approve.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the REAP grant paperwork. Any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item eight. Consideration of possible action on claim to Oklahoma, the State of Oklahoma, reimbursement of additional homestead exemption in the amount of $26,884.
This is really a formality. We can submit a request to receive state funds to reimburse us for the additional homestead exemption. We never get it, the state never has the budget for it, but we're not in line too if we don't submit the claim.
Right.
I'll move to approve.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the claim that we already ever get approved by the state. Any further discussion on that? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Again, is this just my signature? Thank you, ma'am. Item nine. Consideration of possible action on acknowledging receipt of notice of tort claim of Charlotte Pig and forwarding to ACCO claims.
I'll make a motion to approve and send on.
I will second.
Have a motion and a second. I'm gonna read it first before I get all the...
Yep.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. All right, item ten. Consideration of possible action on interagency contract with DEQ for environmental deputy trash cop program, whereas DEQ will reimburse the county $10,000 to support the cost of the program.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second, carry his motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Under Sheriff, Cory, do you got anything you want to...
Yeah, briefly, this grant's gonna be able to reimburse overtime up to about roughly 25 hours a month. And this will be for the deputy that took it over when Hudgens left her agency. He's an SRO, so after hours on the weekends or when school's out, he'll, throughout the months, he will be DEQ environmental grant deputy. And the summertimes, the grant will reimburse his full salary for those two months. So this is basically gonna supplement 10 months worth of overtime, up to about 25 hours a month, and then full time in the summertime.
Free. All right, thank you, sir. So we've had a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
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 Just maybe again, if anyone's... Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, ma'am. Item eleven. Consideration of possible action on employee appreciation dinner on October 22nd, 2021, and payment of cost. I had had this, my arm twisted, put this on the agenda for payment of cost. So with that, I'll open that for discussion.
I guess my first question, what is the cost?
So we have, what, 200?
We average 171, 80.
171, okay. 180 employees. The cost to have it catered will be somewhere between $10 and $12 a person, so...
It's basically less than five times, isn't it?
Yeah.
Less than three.
Yeah.
I don't have a great big issue with it, I mean, I've always have, but...
I do too, I mean, but I've been, people have been twisting my ear on that one.
Yeah, I understand.
But it is, the point that was made to me, and I have to acknowledge it, is our county employees are not the highest paid employees, as far as county employees in the state. Not even close. We lose a lot of our county employees to turn over to other areas and other jobs, especially, you know, in the road, on the roadside. As the oil industry moves up and down, so does our ability to hire qualified people to be machinery operators. Not that a $10 meal's gonna help change that, but the ability to get them together and tell them that they are appreciated, because they are, and to feed them a meal. I believe there's legislation that's been passed that allows us to do that now. I still don't feel real good about that myself. But if that's what the majority, if that's what the board wants to do, I'll support it.
Okay. So we're talking about 180 employees at $12 a day?
It'd be 2,160.
Can I interject? First off, just to clarify, Marvin, I believe that your hesitation isn't about providing the meal, it's about the county picking up the cost rather than individuals.
Using taxpayer money to pay for...
Okay, because I want to make sure that that was clear. You're not against the...
No, I'm not against it. Absolutely not against it.
Okay, so there is new legislation that allows this to be a legitimate county expense. I've been around a long time, I've been, I see where Marvin is. If you were to take action on this and set a ceiling amount, an amount not to exceed, and then I would also, as we have done in the past, this board has taken an action to close early that day, which is a Friday. I think last year we closed at noon officially in that. So those would be, I think, the two considerations.
May I ask one question? I'm all for this as it's wonderful to help staff in their attitudes. But what about COVID? Just a thought. I don't want the bad publicity right now for COVID. You might want to postpone it.
If you'd like to.
I appreciate, and I think everyone appreciates the concerns. We also helped tell the dinner for our employees last year. We spaced our tables. Those that chose to come and take a meal to go because they weren't comfortable were given that option.
Excellent.
So I don't really see last year being much different than the way we would handle it.
Excellent.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion that we approve it not to exceed $2,300.
I will second.
I have a motion and a second to approve it not to exceed $2,300 and to close the county offices at noon on October the 22nd.
Yes, sir. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I snapped that in there.
You saw my leg.
I did, you were trying to throw your ink pen at me. So with that being the motion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item twelve, consideration of possible action on resolution appointing.
I have none.
All right, no requisition. Twelve and thirteen, there are no actions. Item fourteen, consideration of possible action on permanent road crossings as follows. Rogan, Logan County Rural Water District 1, four inch water line crossed University 0.07 miles east of I-35, University 986 feet west of the northeast corner of 15-16 north and two west. Is that?
That is mine.
Two areas, okay, yes, sir.
It's a district two.
All right. And you okay with what the district doing now?
I'm making a motion to accept, to approve.
All right.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the permanent road crossing permit. All, any further discussion? Hearing and all, favor say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. Must have been a whole lot of old activity after, right?
Yeah, it's kind of dead. Up there, yeah.
But I'd like to see the rural water department expanded.
Item fifteen, discussion of possible action on consent agenda.
Your own claims?
Yeah, it was fine.
You've been really on topic.
And it worked out really well. So, when Cassidy comes back next month, you're gonna be wondering if you could.
I'm hoping I won't be in that position next month.
I'd be happy to do that.
I don't know. I think we may try my partial days next week.
Partial? What?
We'll check.
Oh, well. I would go along with the employee lunch, kind of an add-on to that. We've had a volunteer to help us with the barbecue judging contest that will also be a part of that. Sir, still good with that?
It's a busier day, but I'll manage it. He's not cooking this year?
I didn't say that, he's.
He's gonna judge it.
Yeah.
So we're not gonna have the.
Smoke a judge.
Yeah. So we're not gonna have the guy that caters that, you know, cook all the stuff for the contest.
Right.
That'd be different. That'll be a whole different animal, so to speak.
Chris, I want some information.
Could be a full pork, could be a red.
Chase came here with professionals. This is an amateur contest.
She's not an amateur.
She's not an amateur. Surely, yeah.
There was a lot of. I would have to abstain and enter the internet.
He's invited to the job, so he may not want to. What we need to do so other people can participate in that.
On the board.
Yeah. Don't have to be so desperate.
Wait a minute, you say Chase can't enter because he's a professional?
Yeah, this is an amateur contest.
Oh, I see. I see.
That's why Don was invited last year.
Now, let's be more specific, that's why Don channel was.
Correct, Don channel, yes. Wasn't he the one that won?
He did win.
Cause we put salt on him.
Heart splinter?
Yes.
Do you want to swear for the assessor?
Ooh, need to stop that.
Maybe the stand on, it threw me off.
You everyone on the toast, are you really looking at James?
You're talking about keeping everyone on my toes. Still think a stand would be easy. And one of those little cover finger things.
I remember Wade Stank's being with the thing a lot, because recently, I was on the field, but it's not a lot.
It's recent interest, I don't know how, I don't know. Initials, yeah.
Well, yeah, each of these, we tried that many years ago. It took longer to line up and do it than this.
Oh, I don't, I don't care about it being lined up, it's gonna be a stand, you know.
Right. I say cover letter, cover it all.
If they would.
How about put a stamp and then you put your stamp on our stamp?
Yeah, well, yeah, you put your thing over where we stand.
And when one of you's here, another's here, one of you's here. Because that's what we all would do.
On purpose.
If they would let us through the three major steps.
Or if we had like little iPads out here, we'd just hit stop signs on it.
What do you, like, sign?
Oh, let's see, shoes.
Blankets for Marvin, the sign.
Oh, she had, how many of those are in there? So Kobe, these ones are yours down here, don't, these aren't part of that, and those are yours down there. And I didn't know they were in there.
That's okay. Requisition.
Let's do them, you do them out here, because they're not part of this blanket.
Okay.
Then you pull on the whiteboard. I'm glad you're covering.
Uh huh, I'm with you there.
And it's a post. Having struggles if people are self-imposed and.
Oh, yeah.
Moving this for you.
Anxiety.
Can we get a raise, is that what you're saying, Marvin?
Those reports, okay. Troy, if you say these reports are, then we'll make a sound.
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent.
I will second. Have a motion and a second to approve the consent. Any further discussion? Hearing and all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item sixteen, discussion of possible action on approving claims for payment for September 2021. Hey, I figured out what to do with stale warrants. Same thing you do with stale bread, put them in the toaster. They burn out.
They can burn out?
Stale warrants. Did I sign this here? Just one, yes, okay, so this is, doesn't have a stamp on it, okay. Just say, it's confusing. Okay, that takes less time.
So do all the fancy commissioners in Oklahoma County go off camera and sign every single paper like you guys?
I don't know.
They could have a proxy set in for them, hold their ink pen. They don't know what it is, because they're off camera. Or they could do it in the executive session. That's where they move us, I think it was. I just had it get too loud.
Like I said, they had to have to sign, so.
That was odd.
What?
I'm just saying, it's odd. I didn't see any road districts in here before.
Yeah, I had one.
I must have. I was more looking for mine. Because.
What's that?
She hasn't said that.
It could have got by. It was for $5 over.
All right. Entertained a motion for item sixteen.
I'll make a version.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve claims for payment for September 2021. Any further discussion? Hearing and all, favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item seventeen, discussion of possible action on approving purchase card payment for September 2021. The total is $745.33. Looks like an ethernet port and.
I'll move with your approval.
Second.
Solar road signs for Broadway, that's those blue, red and blue flashies that we got down there. Catch people's attention. Have a motion and a second to approve. Repeat card, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, here we go. Item eighteen, any citizens desiring to be heard? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, my name is Maureen Moore, and I live on Charter Oak Road. And I'd like to know what I can tell my community members on what our next step is to get our speed limit down to 25.
Well, I mean, we just passed a resolution to drop it down to 30.
It's at 25 now, we're raising it. And so I'd like to know what we need to do.
So ma'am, the speed limit was never at 25.
There's signs are there.
I understand there were signs out there, but those were not officially put out there. There was no resolution in our resolution form that ever lowered the speed limit out there to 25 miles an hour. Whoever put those signs up did it without the knowledge and consent of our board. We are, we are taking action right now to ensure the safety of that road. As we, and as we work with County Sheriff's Office, if it becomes necessary to consider lowering it to 25, we will put together an official traffic study, which is required by statute. So we'll have to do an official traffic study, which costs a little bit of money, I don't know how much it costs. But once that is, it comes by, they will recommend what the speed should be through there. But in urbanized areas, it requires a traffic study to lower it, any lower than 30 miles an hour. So we have done what we can right now, and we're working with the County Sheriff's Office. They will be patrolling that area out there, and that's, that's what we can tell them.
Okay, so who do we request a traffic study from?
You don't, the board does.
Okay. All righty.
Thank you, ma'am.
And how do we get a resolution proposed?
Once again, our board prepares resolutions and we sign resolutions, so.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other citizens desiring to be heard? Hearing and. Item nineteen, comments, announcements, questions by the Board of County Commissioners or other county officers and department heads. Troy, I'll start with you, the County Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, not much going on, we're just, just as usual, so, no official comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, sir. I would pass along to Sheriff Deveraux. We really appreciate the letter that he sent out yesterday, I think it was yesterday.
Yes.
It expresses the exact feelings of at least this county commissioner, I'll let the other ones speak for themselves, but I think our board also put a resolution forward last. I think our board also put a resolution forward last month that said that we, as a county, will not require our employees to take a shot. It's everybody's individual choice whether or not to, to take a vaccine or not to take a vaccine. And, and to, to copy what the sheriff said, it's, it's not that we're pro-vaccine or anti-vaccine, we're pro-liberty. And so, people should be able to make those decisions on their own, and we fully support that. So, again, if you'll pass along our thanks to the sheriff for that, that letter, we appreciate it. Steve?
Uh, I'll be gone first half of next week for the annual flood plain conference in Norman. And then, been working on the hazard mitigation plan update, had our first meeting, got another one scheduled for the end of next week for the town officials and community people that didn't make the first meeting.
Okay. Any questions, Steve, from the board? Or Troy from the board? Now, maybe that way you can guess, okay. Uh, one thing I'd ask is, if you could help us remember to put on our next agenda that debris removal issue, and I would inform the board that the request to use county funds, the letter's been sent off to Lowell, that's, that's been sent off to Lowell. So, we haven't heard anything back from him on that. So, the, the challenge that we have is, that is not a county road, it's not a county bridge. And so, what we end up doing, and we talked to the district attorney about that when we were, we had our budget meeting, and she said that we shouldn't use county road funds on something that doesn't have anything to do with the road. Even though, because it's on private property, and, and so it kind of puts it in a weird situation. And so, without knowing what funds other counties might use and provide, I, I offered up that we could consider using funds out of the general fund for something like this, it's a one-off. Not that I would probably ever vote for that, because we don't have enough funds in the general fund to do what we need to do anyway. But that question's been submitted to Lowell, along with what monies could we use, that, that sort of thing, so, he's, he's chewing on that.
Yeah, it's kind of an odd deal, I mean, I don't see how you can take any county funds and clean up private property. I mean, if that's the case, I got some spots that might deserve us.
Right.
But, yeah, that's, that's a very strange project.
And, and my, my curiosity centers around, this is a one-time deal where the state legislature appropriated money for this one project to clean up a debris pile, pile up in a creek on private property, when there are so many of those throughout our county that we have that need to be cleaned up anyway. So, is, is, does this mean that we'll be able to go back to our legislatures, our representatives and senators, and ask them for additional funds in the future to help clean up other debris piles on creeks?
Yeah.
Will, will all the other seventy-six counties other than Logan County be able to do that? This could, gets to be an expensive venture for the state.
Yeah, it could.
I mean, they set a precedence here, and, and so...
And they set aside two hundred and fifty thousand for the project?
That's what I understand, yes, sir.
Interesting.
So, anyway, if you could help us get, get that on the agenda, that would be, be great. Uh, all right. Monty, anything from you?
No, pretty good.
Okay. Cody?
Um, I have nothing to do.
All I had was that remark about the debris removal, and that's all I have, I'm sorry, I forgot. Madam clerk? Madam clerk, anything from you? Okay. With that, I'll entertain item twenty.
I'll move with your...
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second to adjourn any further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, gentlemen.